Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so roll call. Here.
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 And so, public participation. Is there anyone wishing to address the board?
Uh, no.
Okay, that being said, we're gonna move on. And again, it is an honor to be a board member, to serve this community. And again, we have our hands on hope, and we are change agents. Again, in the nature of the school, innovative and creative and excellent in our standards. Okay, and then, yes, approval of agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Yell.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
Thank you for helping me here. Okay, so the superintendent, principals, and department reports. Anyone who wishes, or Miriam, go forward.
So, any questions about the board report that I presented to you all for more?
Nothing, no.
I think it's a, it was, this entire superintendent search has been a success for the district, having ten people apply for the position, and you all were able to narrow it down to the two finalists. So, I count that as a success. And then, you know, the ongoing concern with BOCs and what that looks like for Cripple Creek Victor District moving forward has definitely been a challenge. And we're still not there yet, but we'll get into that a little bit later. And I think Dan is online? Yes?
Yeah.
Anything for Dan?
No.
Follow you?
Oh, I, I did.
He added some data.
Well, obviously, I thank you, Dan, for getting this in front in terms of the, is it Colorado Public Radio?
Yeah.
And again, it certainly, uh, has been the talk of the town. And very positive for us. I, did he say something?
It's really low, but the volume does, needs to go up some, I don't know how to turn it up.
Yes, you.
And then-
I can hear him saying something, but-
I looked at your flash attendance drive, and, uh, was that, that was eight days of school?
Yes, that was eight days of school. My head was driven by Ice Castle.
I can't hear you, Dan, hang on a minute.
Just a sec. I can't, I don't know how to turn the volume up on here. It's really low.
You have to do a spell with a mouse.
Is it the microphone button? It's lit up like it's off.
Really? Oh, yeah, well, no, that would be that, right. Yeah, it should be this one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Now, Tom.
How about you?
Yeah, we couldn't hear you. There we go.
Hey, hey, great. So, Mary, on your comments about CPR, I was really happy that they have taken an interest in Cripple Creek. You know, they gave us the really positive, student-centered story at the beginning. And then, the one on the cell phones, I thought was great. I think we had eleven students interviewed for that one, pretty happy about that. And the question about the, um, the attendance drive, that was driven, Ice Castles donated some tickets for students. Um, and so, we just kinda made that happen at the last minute, and it coincided with the flu. So, our numbers were actually lower over those two weeks than they've been all year long. But I, I, nothing I could do about that. We had the tickets, so we went ahead and did it.
Okay, and, and that kind of explains things, because I was trying to think about the comparative or the trend lines in regards to that. And, and so, talking about the flu, then, you know, I see why that drove those numbers down.
Yeah, our percentages over the year are way higher than that. Um, you know, and I could bring that to you, but I wanted to do the attendance drive just to, just to get some kids out to Ice Castles.
Okay, and then I have another question. We're not eligible for the CTA reimbursement due to the 1% sales tax, so-
Yes, um, as we are funding all of CTE through the 1% sales tax, the CTA reimbursements have to be, if it's coming out of your general fund. Um, we are still eligible for CDE reimbursements, which comes from the certifications that our juniors and seniors are going to be earning. Um, and the CTA reimbursement was, was fairly small overall anyway.
Okay, and that's kind of what I wanted to know, is are we turning our backs on $400,000? Or is it $40,000?
No, we're turning our backs on about, I, I wanna say it was $17,000. Um, but as long as we're funding those programs through the 1% sales tax, we would not qualify for CTA. But that, that's, that's not covering a majority of our program.
Okay, and so then, my next question is, is that, i- is, uh, if that was not on a budget, why not? Is there any way of appropriating those funds? Obviously, when, if the sales tax goes away, this needs to take and be there. But is there any way of, uh, what? Juggling?
Yeah, we, we, we could shift this, um, looking at the budget for next year, we could go ahead and shift some of the CTE programming back to general fund, and at that point, we would be able to get some of that reimbursement back. Um, we, we wanted to delineate what part of the sales tax we're using, um, for the CTE program, or, or rather, the other opposite of that, what part of CTE programming we wanted to identify as general fund. And at that point, we, we could get CTE funding for that, or CTA funding for that. All the add-ins.
But wait, 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 we promised everybody it was, all that money was going to CTE. We never said a word about shifting anything anywhere.
Well, and I'm not saying that, again, what I see is that there's way more monies that are being spent than what's coming in from the sales tax. It's just a matter of what's the line item. That, I mean, that's what I-
Yeah, and-
But I, I don't know this. Huh?
And, and Donna, I think it would be the other way around. We would still be spending all of the 1% sales tax on CTE, but we could line item out certain aspects of CTE that we could still get reimbursed for from CTA.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, I, I don't wanna take and turn down anything that we're gonna need in the, in the future.
Charlotte has a comment.
Go ahead.
The CTA reimbursement's been like less than $10,000. Like, it, I, I budgeted $6,500 for this here, so it, we claim $17,000 in expenses, and we don't get close to that back. It's the same thing with all the other category codes, you're not really losing very much money. I don't know the way that you could restructure the 1% sales tax without, like, that I, that's the-
Okay, so did you hear that, Dan?
No, I, I can't hear any of that.
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, I think Charlotte had something to add, that in, in the, uh, figuring it all out, that it came really down to $6,500 rather than the $17,000. And, and again-
Yeah, it's not a significant amount. Um, and Mary, we would be able to claim any of that after the 1% sales tax. Um, if that goes away, we would still be able to get back into the CTA funding. That's, that's a longstanding reimbursement program for career and technical programs. So, that, that's not going away, even if we lose that $6,000 or $10,000 a year, whatever it is.
And, and you know how I am, I wanna put my money, hands on all the pots.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, it's like a buffet.
I can, Charlotte, I'll reach out to you, and we can talk through options on that.
Okay, that was, that were, that was my questions on the reports. Anybody else?
No, I don't have any.
Tonya, did you wanna share?
Uh, I wanted to really also share the picture, because it did not come across, um, in black and white. And when we look at the picture, it's just something that I did for Literacy Day, when our parents came in. And I figured out the number of hours in a year. The red is the number of hours kids are in school. This line-
Oh.
Is the number of hours kids are not in school. And this blue is the amount they're asleep. So, what we're really looking at is, here's the amount of hours kids are in school each year, and here's the amount of waking hours they are not in school each year. And I really wanted to show that to parents, to, um, help them understand why attendance is so important, and also to get them to help us with, well, one of the things, you guys have heard me talk about literacy for five years now, is that kids really need to be exposed to eighty to a hundred words a week. And we can't do that all at school. And it's, I'm not talking, you know, your vocabulary quiz. I'm talking exposure and vocabulary and building that background knowledge, so that, I just really wanted to show, since it didn't come across in the picture very well at all.
I thought you were trying to remind us what the gym looked like?
Kinda, but, um-
Yep, that's it.
So, um, and then, I also have, uh, just over there-
On that picture, Tony, does it, do, do the red and the yellow overlap, or do they?
No.
No, okay.
I was just, I just did them that way for a comparison, so that you could, you know-
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that, I was kinda running out of wall space.
Yeah.
And then, the other thing was that our kids participated in the American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge. They did fabulously, they learned CPR, they learned how to, uh, they learned about an AED, they learned about, um, heart healthy diet, they learned about heart healthy exercises. Our PE instructor, Josh Falls, spearheaded that, did a great job. American Heart Association kindly gave all of the staff our T-shirts. But we will be having a celebration, but we don't have all the ta- the tally totals in yet. My understanding is that I think they get, the kids get to slime Josh.
Oh, good.
So, if, if they reach certain totals-
That's a Kodak moment.
Yeah, and actually, they could work towards tickets or, um, to like a Denver Nuggets game and things like that. The American Heart Association was sponsoring them for. So, I just wanted to share those with you, because I thought, that, I thought that graph is pretty powerful.
Yeah, that's really good.
Thank you, Tonya. Were there any other?
I heard great things about your literacy day, and most of them came from my son Boots, who, it was his first time to attend that, and he was glowing in regards to, uh, the, your, the compliments about attending that. And I thought, wow.
It was, it was, you know, I spent a lot of time, um, trying to talk with the parents when they were having lunch with the kids, and just, you know, what did you get out of it? What was the most enlightening thing? And I had things like, my kid's been snowing me. I had no idea my kid could read this well. Now, we're practicing at home. Or, um, the, we had a lot of comments about the needing to learn or be exposed to eighty to a hundred words a week. You know, oh, my gosh. You know, 'cause one of the things we talked about is just talking out loud, you're going through the grocery store, you're driving down the road, what's a yield sign? What's the point of a yield sign? What does it mean at the grocery store when they talk about, uh, by the pound? Those kinds of things. So, that, I had a lot of comments about that. Had a lot of comments about the various games they played, and how they loved that something so basic in the way of practice could be made fun so easily.
Good.
Yes? The biggest thing is we hired a new family advocate, and we hired Kimberly Forrest, and I think she'll be great. She's been here in the community forever, she knows the family. Her husband and her, their two kids, that might be coming. I enjoy having her, so I'm excited.
That's good. That's a real coup.
Yeah.
And I, I see we don't, we're not voting on anything for you tonight. Okay.
Do you have any other openings going on, Dussey?
No.
Do you believe staff? Yeah, there's a couple.
Yes.
That doesn't happen very often.
No.
Look.
Anything else for the board?
No, it's pretty well described.
Okay, so then, moving on, uh, we're now to the, uh, business meeting, so the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call. Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Green. Aye.
Stokes. Aye.
Okay. So, is it starting to snow outside?
Too dark for the weather, doesn't look like it.
Nah.
Okay, next then, is, uh, the, um, approval of January's 2025 payables and payroll.
I'll, uh, uh, I will move to approve the, uh, uh, 2025 report.
Okay.
January 2025. One second, Doc.
Okay, roll call.
Yell.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Green.
Stokes.
Aye.
Okay, next is the first reading of the policies for removal.
Well, God, I know there, there were only a few.
Yeah, I, yes.
But they were, they were, many of them were short. So, I will read through the list. Again, these are policies that are not in Caspi's policy manual, um, and so, they are being recommended for removal from our manual. Doesn't mean that they haven't been renamed, or they've been combined with something else, right? Um, but just these policies as written, as named, or not in Caspi's policy manual. So, they are IIV class size, IA instructional goals and learning objectives, IV academic freedom, IGA curriculum development, IGD curriculum adoption, IGF curriculum review, IHA basic instructional program, IHAC history and civil government education, IHAE physical education, IHAI occupational education, IHAI, work experience opportunities, IHAMB family life sex education, IHAMB dash R, family life sex education, IHAMC HIV AIDS education, IHAMC regulation, IH, HIV AIDS education, IHBA dash R, due process rights of parents of handicapped students, IHBC programs for at-risk students, IHBD dash R, parent involvement in education, IHVG dash E, notice of intent to homeschool, IHVG dash R, homeschooling procedures, IJJ textbook selection and adoption, IJJ dash R, textbook selection, adoption, and curriculum review, IJK supplementary materials selection and adoption, IJL library material selection and adoption, IJNDA online instruction, IJNDV school website publishing, IJNDV dash R, school website publishing regulation, IJOA dash R, field trips and excursions, IKAD parent conferences, IKD honor rolls, IKF dash two graduation requirements, IKF dash two dash E graduation requirements, IL evaluation of instructional programs, ILVA district program assessment, ILBB state program assessment, IMA teaching methods, IMBB dash R religious activities. May I have a round of applause?
Yes. You're gonna be able to say this in your sleep?
Oh, God, I hope not.
So, may I have a motion?
Oh, may I make a motion to approve the removals for the first year?
Okay, a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Yell.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Green.
No. No.
Okay.
Unless I know what's going to replace this, everything that I see here takes away oversight from the school board, from the superintendents, from the principals, from the, to the parents. I'm not gonna vote to recall any of this.
None, none of the?
I, unless I know, I mean, when you start telling me that you're gonna pull history and, and, uh, government, that isn't gonna happen. It just isn't. I'm not gonna vote for that.
Okay. And I can get some additional information to let you know what policy now encompasses.
Well, and I'd have to see it, 'cause right now, everything I see here takes away oversight. And that's what I'm saying. And I'm not comfortable with that at all. Uh, it, it takes away the transparency of the, to the families, the, the, the parents. It takes away the, uh, oversight of the school board. It takes away for the oversight of the superintendent, the principals, and, and the teachers. I can't vote for that.
Send that to me, do, Miriam, when you find it, if you could, 'cause, uh, I had some of them, same questions. Some of the stuff I looked up, there was replacements for and things.
Yeah, there's replacements, good, I missed them. Okay, I'll get that information, too.
How close are we getting with all of these?
We're very close. Um- I, and there's twenty-six letters in the alphabet.
Okay.
Oh, there's no- I think maybe K are the last. H, I, J, K. Yeah, I think that's it. We're close.
So, this will be a piece of your retirement party. Okay.
In a policy manual?
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be a drunken thing.
Yeah, okay, okay. Then, moving on then to the bond options, that was, uh, agenda number four. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to table that until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I would also ask that we, oh, sorry, we're not there yet.
Okay.
ELA curriculum.
Okay, so, uh, roll call.
Yell.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Stokes.
Aye.
So, then, next is the ELA curriculum adoption. You had something to-
Tonya, it's, it's me, you've been listening to me talk about literacy for five years, so you get more. The adoption, um, committee, the adoption rotation has, is part of what goes through the DEAC committee. So, according to the District Accountability Committee, the curriculum adoption this year is elementary reading and literacy. And, um, when we go for, uh, reading and literacy, the, actually, the high school opted not to, um, adopt this year. They prefer going through a lot of their online things that they're going through. So, they asked not to be part of the adoption. So, it is simply the elementary adoption that we're looking at. So, when we look at the process, um, we have to go through a couple of things. One, in order to get read monies, we have to have a, a curriculum that is on the approved curriculum list, which is cool, because it follows all of the science of reading things, the SOAR things that we've been learning, which means that, um, we narrow it down to curriculums that have been vetted. So, we don't have to go through a lot of curriculums that just don't fit what we're looking for. Then, we went to a lot of the public forums and started looking at what other schools are having to say about a bunch of these curriculums. Then, we went to, um, there's a, um, group called the Reading League, and they did peer evaluation, or pre-reviews on several of the curriculums. So, we narrowed down the ones that we wanted to look at based on a lot of the public comments, and then the peer reviews from the Reading League, um, based on the five pillars of literacy, which is the phonemic awareness, phonics, um, vocabulary comprehension, and fluency. So, we wanted to see how the curriculum each addressed those components. Then, we started, um, going through and getting samples. The curriculum committee then started reviewing it. We got online access to the online curriculum, and then the curriculum committee started creating the chart that is actually in your packet. I know you got a second one in the, um-
Yes.
In the, uh, the little binder-clipped packet, too.
Right.
So, um, then-
Are they the same?
Yeah.
No, they, this, there, there's additional pages in your second one. The one you-
No, we're just talking about this one.
Oh, okay.
This one is the same.
Has the money through.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, so we really started looking then, based on the pros and cons, and, um, I'm sure you've heard, there is no such thing as a curriculum that doesn't have to have something supplemented. So, it's like, what is it that the curriculum needed supplemented, and what do we already have strengths in? We opted to keep our intervention program that is working so strongly, K5, and that is a seriously in-depth phonemic awareness phonics program. And so, with that, knowing that we already had that in place, so we started looking for, um, curriculums that, maybe that wasn't their strength, but if they had everything else that was strong, we wanted that. We actually ended up narrowing it down to looking at the new curriculum for the curriculums we're already using. So, right now, we are currently using Wonders 2017 and Super Kids 2016. And we're using the Super Kids in grades kindergarten first and second. Super Kids is actually, um, updating theirs, and we will be, if we adopt it, we will get the 2026 version of it. So, that's how new that will be. And then, we looked at the Wonders, which would be the 2023 version. Um, but they only revamp, as I said, like the 2020, they don't revamp that often. So, we are getting, um, more, we will be getting more use out of it than we would outlast the, uh, copyright. So, we really started looking at then, um, what, having used it for several years, what did we see as their non-strength areas? And what we found was that both of these had upgraded and strengthened those areas that were not as lo- as strong as we would like them before. When we started looking at some of the other, the only other one we ended up really liking, it just didn't have those same strengths. So, then, what, um, we did then was, obviously, we went through the DEAC committee. The DEAC committee has, uh, voted on it to bring it to you with this, these quotes. And what we're looking at with these quotes, the cost overview, I know it seems really high, but one of the things that curriculums have started doing is, instead of giving you, um, a price for the basil, and then giving you, um, an every-year cost for the consumables, they're rolling them all together. So, what they're looking at is open access, all of the teacher access to the online curriculum, so that when our students go remote, they can access things remotely also.
It's a package deal.
It's a package deal, and we get the consumables for five, renewed every, for five years, every year for five years. So, they're, they're rolling those two costs together.
And that price covers for that five-year period.
Yes, yeah.
Well, that's a pretty good deal.
So, the only thing that is not in here is that, um, the second-grade Super Kids isn't in print yet. So, except we still have this year's Super Kids that we're currently using. And when we do the, uh, curriculum professional development, we can still have those second-grade teachers come in and do that professional development. And then, we can, just as soon as they release that print edition, we can order that print edition for second grade.
So, the Zayner Bussler and McGraw-Hill mesh?
Yes.
Okay. You guys are all comfortable grouping?
Yes, and we've been doing that for, I think we actually adopted the Super Kids in 2016. And we adopted, um, Wonders for third grade, because it's all kinda rolled out as the grant rolled out. We got Wonders for third grade first, and I think we got that in 2018. And then, we, we got, um, the rest of it in like 2020. So, we've been doing them together since like 2020. Yeah, and that's what we had, we had our strongest literacy teachers on this committee. We had Erin Lohmeyer, we had Sarah Lech, uh, we had Cory Lohmeyer. All of them are super strong. Erin and Cory are both trainers for the letters pro- strong. Erin and Corey are both trainers for the letters program. So we just, we really went for some in-depth look at it. So what we're, you know, looking for is just the approval to purchase it. We're hoping that if you guys approve it, then we can order it next week. We can get it in before the teachers break for the summer, so that they can have it with them and look at it over the summer. And we have any of this you want to look at. And if you're familiar with Super Kids, I don't know if you are, Stephanie, but they have new characters in their cast this year.
Okay. Well, my daughter talks about it all the time, and she loves it. And she's liking her ears that all the time.
They are keeping Golly, at least, which is one of the most popular. That's the dog.
Tanya, this is trying to get this right. These prices are based against the, like 25 for the students, what went down, single ones for the teachers, that kind of thing?
Twenty-five student, yeah, twenty-five student books and sets, so to speak, and then a set of teachers manuals, yes. And also in there, you will find some of the supplementary stuff, like the vocabulary cards.
Right, yeah, I can see it here.
And those are just like a one-time purchase, because those we will reuse every year.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, any other questions from the board in regards to Tanya and this curriculum? So then, can we entertain a motion?
Well, if I may add, I would love, my question is, when do we need to bring, to order the next second grade Super Kids, because it is not in the estimate? Do we need to bring that before you, or we assume that the price will be comparable to what the first grade estimate is?
As long as it's comparable, I see no problem.
So that would just make sure that you guys understand that.
I think that would be most efficient.
Okay.
I mean, we're not going to see a huge difference.
So the motion would be that we approve this as presented with the understanding the second grade curriculum would be approved once you get the numbers, but we need to see what they are.
That's what I'm asking, is if you want to see them?
Just tell us what it is.
Well, I don't, so, wait a minute. I didn't understand this. I thought that we're
We both to approve this, and then with the understanding when second grade is available, that's approved also?
Yeah, that, and that they will just notify us after it.
Yeah.
Because she's basically saying
How much money we spent.
Yeah, she's basically saying that they're going to equate with one another.
Yeah.
That we don't need a separate motion in another meeting.
No, we don't need a separate motion. We just need to know what we spent.
Yeah, yeah, just
Excellent.
Give us the information when it comes in.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so the motion then, you want to say that again?
Okay. So I think the motion that we approve these programs as presented with the understanding that when the secondary, second grade materials are available, we approve that, but we'll be notified how much of us.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call?
Eels.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Stowe.
Aye.
Okay, then, I think we made it through all of that.
So the rejoin, the recon
Oh, yes, rejoin.
I'm going to ask that that be tabled.
Okay, and we have an information item, so that will be explained.
Yes.
So may I have a motion then to table this?
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second.
Roll call?
Eels.
Aye.
Brazil.
Aye.
Conley.
Aye.
Ree.
Aye.
Stowe.
Aye.
Okay, then moving into information items. So the first one is the 1% sales tax report article.
So I just wrote an article that kind of speaks to how we're using the 1%, thanking the voters. And then Charlotte helped put together, she just put it together. She didn't help me, she did it.
Well, at least she was.
Breakdown of the spending and the pie chart, kind of a bit of a narrative there beneath the pie chart, how those expenses break down. And then the entire expense report for all of our expenditures using the 1% sales tax proceeds. So this information was sent to, Frank, he forwarded on to city council. I'm going to the city council meeting Wednesday evening to answer any questions they might have. Charlotte said she'd join in virtually in case there's maybe a little more technical accounting questions being asked. So any questions or concerns with the article or the expense report?
On the expense report, there's several line items for adult education, but there's nothing budgeted for that. Is that going to continue on, or is that just, as far as the adult ed, I don't know?
So it is all for, if anything is for our seniors or recent graduates that they can take advantage of through the Adult Career Connection Center, then we help cover those expenses, right? But it's related directly to seniors, current seniors or recent graduates. For example, we paid for one of last year's graduates to get her substitute license, right? And so now she's subbing across the street and looking at possibly going to school to be a teacher. So those types of things, bring your A-game classes that are being taught, certifications, those types of things that we offer through the center, that our kids or graduates can tackle too.
Okay.
Yeah. And I feel, and you guys, if you don't want, but I feel career and technical ed, right, it's still
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
inappropriate.
Yeah.
So it's just maybe something I'm not understanding. So it says FY '24 and FY '25. So is this?
Fiscal year.
Yeah. Because I, I'm trying to think. We've got our first check for the sales tax in February of 2024.
Yes.
Okay. And so, is this, I'm just confused. I thought that this was a report of, for that year of the sales tax, but it looks like it's not a projection also. Am I just not seeing this right? And again, it's my eyesight. My thought was, is that, that this is a report on how those monies were spent in a year's time?
FY '24 refers to July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. Our fiscal years are happening now. So FY '24 is February to June, and then FY '25 is July to January.
Okay, okay, July to January.
Wow, it's July to June.
Starts July 1 to June 30.
Yeah, so this report happens, our fiscal year '25 happens July to January.
Okay. I guess. We're right. I mean, I just, I'm just trying to think about the money.
Yeah.
And when it came in, and how we're accountable in that, that year's time, because basically, I thought you were accounting for the monies that came in
Just in
Starting in, in February.
And
Well, that's when we've got the first check.
Yeah, and we are, but that doesn't, that's not how, as a school does, we who are accounting our budget, right? Our budget runs July through June. So
Yeah, but it's kind of like a grant, because some grants are not on your particular budget. They, they take and frame you in to a particular timeline.
Yeah.
And so that's how I was looking at this report.
But every month is accounted for since we received the funds.
Yeah.
Right? It's just broken down into our fiscal years. And I think that's what the council is wondering too. I mean, I guess, I don't know if we can even be around a report for, to run it. You have to, you have to piece the last year and piece of this year of their fiscal year. It's just, I could have applied that, because all of them, they, I just felt, especially since, yeah, want them to be more transparent.
I just, and again, what I was thinking that, you know, obviously, I'm a little gun-shy because of everything that's gone forward with RE2. And so I don't want to take it to be into anything. And again, transparency. And I was just thinking about when the money started and, you know, where we're at now, and that this would be a yearly report that, you know, every year for the next, I mean, we're hoping to renew this in four years, that this is going to happen every March, they can be assured they're going to get this report, which is part of our, again, our IGA with the city. So I, I mean, that's how I was seeing it.
Yeah, it just, it doesn't line up the same, Mary. I don't know how to, I mean, every month is there, is accounted for, but it's
And, and maybe they won't have any questions in regards to that. I, you know, I don't know. But I mean, again, I, it's just from living my life in the grant world, that, you know, sometimes our grants come in in October, and I don't, we don't have to put in the final report until that November.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And so we're always working on this rotation, but the restricted funds.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
Sorry to throw this in, but that's just the way I looked at it.
Yeah.
Well, doesn't the city's fiscal year go the same way?
No, they're January to December.
January to December? Okay.
I don't know. I guess Charlotte, well, let's see what the city council meeting brings about if they're confused or don't want it in this format, then they'll be trying to do it differently, but
At least they're getting it.
Yeah. Sometimes when you do these things, right, then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, by the way, can you do this? And then, and this, and this too, you know?
We never got any guidelines on what they wanted to begin with. So basically, whatever we want to report or the way we want to report, it's kind of up to us, isn't it?
Yeah.
And, and again, community of caring over the years has had to hone this. And so we do an annual report. And, and again, over the years, it has grown. So now, it's really a piece of artwork. Not only the, all the information that's there, it's the outcomes that, you know, what kind of impact did these funds create? And so that's was, that's the heart of the annual report.
Yeah.
Is, again, can you tell me effectuality here? You know, and again, it's not outputs, it's outcomes. And so, you know, and again, that's been a process, I mean, we're nonprofit 25 years almost, that it's taken us to kind of get there. I don't know. Okay, moving on then, is, okay, the superintendent search. So I think the biggest thing was looking at our, our public interview form and how we are marketing that and getting as much attendance as possible. And it's Walt that said he was going to provide, he's going to do the form, and he's going to craft the questions, and he also was going to have a handout for everybody that could, in the audience, that could make comments. And then he would synthesize that for the board for the next one, that he really was not looking at there being a question and answer period in, or from the public, that public participation was, was that. And then the board meeting the next day was going to take and be executive session in terms of the interview of those two people.
Yes. Yep.
Yep.
And so those agendas, I'm working on finishing those up tomorrow and Wednesday. They'll be posted in the normal posting places Thursday.
And I, I've, you know, let community of caring, our employees know that we're having this.
Yeah.
I gladly distribute flyers.
I sent out a mass email.
Hey, Jeff?
So it's, and I put it on Nextdoor. It'll go live Facebook this week, telling people.
It's on our, it's on our website, it's on our Facebook page. All the staff have been invited, all faculty.
Okay, okay. Okay, any other questions about that process?
Could I, could I ask again? So what I'm hearing is that Walt is crafting questions, he's going to be asking the questions, and the public won't have any input. They just get to listen.
Well, there'll be a meet and greet afterwards.
Well, and they'll be
Where they can talk to the candidates.
But how does, how does he get the inputs from the public then?
It's the cards.
With the QRs about it?
The comment cards will be passed out. And then again, there'll be a meet and greet afterwards where they, the public can meet the candidates, talk to them, ask them what they want.
I think he's going to put a QR code and space for comments. Right, and space for comments. But the staff has been asking QR, so
And, and we felt that that was, be the best way in regards to, you know, voice, and, and it spread out in terms of gathering as much and as wide and deep.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I guess the food, they spoke about the culinary, people having something that we would have some white, like cookies or?
I, I was just going to take care of the refreshments. I don't think culinary had any heads up on that, so.
Okay, okay. Just something that, again,
I got it.
Coffee, yeah, okay.
What time do you want us to do the help?
I'm, I'm fine. I mean, it starts at 4:30, so I'll just be able to set it all out right before it starts.
Okay, then, Bozey's updates.
Okay. She doesn't have gray hair, but I do.
So where I left you all at the February meeting was that the attorneys were now involved, and they were going to be working together to adjust the MOU and, you know, really discuss how to effectively provide services to both Woodland Park School District and Purple Creek Victor's exceptional students. That meeting never happened. The attorneys were supposed to meet, and then there was going to be a special board meeting held for the U-Pass Bozey's Board, in which they were able to discuss with legal counsel all of the recommendations during an executive session, move out, and then vote on possibly a resolution for reinstating U-Pass Bozey's as a two-school district Bozey's. So that never happened. What did happen was, we received a notice that there was going to be a special board meeting for U-Pass Bozey's to vote on the reconstitution of the U-Pass Bozey's with a new resolution. So I received this agenda that just said reconstitution of U-Pass Bozey's resolution when I was in Florida. So Donna did reach out, we talked. I said, well, this is, it's good, right? We want the, we don't want to try to create a brand-new Bozey's when we already have one. So this, this sounds okay. However, when I returned and saw the resolution, there were some things in that resolution that I just don't feel served, Purple Creek Victor. that I just don't feel served, Purple Creek Victor. Mostly that it would be a BOCES where, in which there were no employees. So under that model, all the employees would be employees of Woodland Park School District. And that gives Purple Creek Victor no say in, if we, no say in anything, right, about those particular employees. So my request was that at least the executive director be an employee of the BOCES, not either one of the school districts, right? In order to do their job objectively, right, and, and remain impartial. So they didn't like that. Woodland Park School District did not agree. They are saying it's a, it's more of an economy of scale. They can't afford that particular model. And the other was that they appointed Brad Miller as the attorney for the BOCES. And the BOCES has never had its own attorney, like on retainer. Each school district were able to choose their own legal counsel. So I didn't agree with that. And they basically said it's effective immediately. So I reached out to Paul Foster, so the Assistant Commissioner of Special Education, and told him that I was displeased with how this happened. I never, I wasn't a part of the resolution, crafting it, nor was it sent to me like as a draft. It was taken to the board, voted on, and, and pushed through. So I ended up meeting with the commissioner, Susannah Cordova. And Donna was there, Marcy Palmer was there. Marcy Palmer has expressed concerns with this particular model. Many people have expressed concerns. So where does that leave us? So we met again. Again, I asked to have a special board meeting, right? In which the board could then discuss everything with our legal counsel present. It doesn't look like that's happening. It looked like, once again, our attorneys talked a little bit. And now I'm receiving emails from Brad Miller basically saying what they will or won't do moving forward. I'm not trying to be obstinate or impractical or, I want what's best for Purple Creek Victor's students. And, and in order to do that, we need to have a seat at the table in the decision-making. And this really isn't allowing us to do that. And, and so.
Well, they're obviously proceeding that they don't want us on that board. They don't want us to be part of it. And, you know.
Well, the most reason, yeah.
There's no reason for us to go in, beg them to do it. We'll do it on our, we can do our own thing. We don't need them to do what we need to do.
I mean, we.
It would be convenient.
Yes and no, but not as it is now.
If you're going to throw roadblocks at everything that we want to do, what's the point? It's just, it's, it's just going in and, and it's a, it's an effort in futility is what it is. Based against what you're telling us.
So when I reached out to Mary, I also reached out to Mary because I got this notice for this special meeting. Except that it was to vote on something that you guys hadn't seen and I hadn't seen. And I called Suzanne, the board president down there, and said, we've not even seen this. We haven't had talk, a chance to talk about it. Our board hasn't seen it. You know, Miriam hasn't seen it. And she says, well, you just have to call a special meeting and get this done. And I said, well, that's not physically possible to do that, you know, because we have these little laws about notice. I, I feel that this was a railroad, a way to get control. I am very grateful that we've had some people step in and step up and stick their necks out to clue us in on some of the other things going on behind the scenes. Miriam has held the line. And I told her I'm right there with her because this is not looking out for our kids. It's not looking out for our district. I feel really bad if this doesn't work out, that Manitou's going to lose their option to be independent. But I still don't even understand why they cut me up to even vote because it's not their thing. But it's a mess. It is an absolute mess. And so.
What was also proposed to me today was by Brad Miller, was that we, the new board would be comprised of two representatives from Woodland Park School District, two from Purple Creek Victor, and one at large. And in their proposal, they how, pretty much named who the at-large person is. And, and again, it's like, well.
And I feel that should be an application process. Just like if you're applying to be, you know, on a library board or something else, there should be an application process for people from both districts to be considered with why they should have that position, not just, we're going, you're going to do this and you're going to do this, and you're like.
Well, I strongly believe somebody who is at-large is not in favor of any one district over the other. They're more objective, right? That's why they're the at-large member. That's just kind of how I view that with a five-member board, right? They, and, and to pick someone for the at-large just doesn't feel that way, right? That, that impartial. So I don't know. Anyway, we're, we, the bad news is that we only have until March 12th to figure this all out as per CDE and the Attorney General's Office. If we can't reach an agreement, then we kind of revert back to the three-member U-Pass BOCES. And then Manitou doesn't, isn't able to form their own AU as they have applied for and have began working on, which is really not what I want for them. I would, I think they can do it and do it well, so I would hate to see them lose that opportunity. But again, I have to do what's best for Purple Creek Victor's.
Well, it sounds like Woodland Park's just trying to run out the clock is what it sounds like.
I think they want to reach.
To be honest with you, they don't want us there, so they're going to run out the clock.
I think they want to reduce, but I think they want a fair way. And so that it's more about our way or the highway.
Yeah, well, that doesn't work for me. It just doesn't work for me.
My question is if you had conversations with Manitou in regards to the complexity of what we're facing right now.
They know, they're in all the conversations.
Okay, so they, they kind of understand, you know? And, and again, I see that it is kind of a one-way show. And, but that compromises our, our population, which is probably percentage-wise much higher than their population. I mean, if, if you ran the percentages in regards to kids, their special needs, they're higher with our rural school, even though their numbers are not higher. You get what I'm talking about?
Yes.
So then my thing would be, here, all of this is, is covered by legal requirements. And so the legal requirements are under the ESEA, Elementary and Secondary Education Act, the FAPE, Free and Appropriate Public Education, and IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Act. And so in my mind, it's kind of like, you know, Civil Liberties Union or the ACLU, that there are these legal advocacy groups who protect this particular population.
Yeah, and Marcy Palmer actually has, has reached out to them and shared some of the concerns that she's having with this particular model that they had proposed with the no-employee BOCES. So it, it's just, yeah, it's.
I mean, it, it almost seems like that, sure, they can take it, they're going to have to decide how they're going to play with us. That it, it's not all, all the cards are not theirs.
Right.
Okay? But if they're not, if, if there's a roadblock, sometimes the only way you can get past the roadblock is by people who know the law and say, no, that's against the law, that's against the law, that's against the law. And, and you can't craft it that way. Because in the end, it's a protective factor for special needs kids.
Well, and as the BOCES board member, I'm very concerned that we have an employee working for the BOCES that works for both districts because they have had 15 or 16 violations in Woodland Park School District in the last year. It scares me.
Free, brethren?
Yeah.
But I would like to take a note. I mean, you know that we have this high free and reduced lunches. What's our percentage of kids who are special needs for our school district? Isn't, that's in our uniform improvement plan numbers?
Yeah, I believe it's 16% of our population are on IEPs currently, 74% free and reduced lunch rate.
Okay, so that, what's theirs?
I don't, I don't know off the top of the head. I may not know.
It's kind of like you running the graph of the hours in a kid's day. You know what I mean? That here's the facts of the deal.
Exactly.
And, and again, even though we may have low numbers, it's still a demographic of how our school needs to be served.
Um, so I'm sorry to interrupt, Dawn, but I'm getting some texts that it's starting to come now. I don't know.
Okay, well, I just guess my thing is, is to take a look at this and see if we have it in the right arena to be fought. And if, if they're, they're a non-concession entity, we don't need this. Our kids don't need this.
Yeah.
No.
I'm going to tell you that Miriam has been absolutely outstanding and successful on this. And, well, that's fact. And I will die on this note because this is my, so just so we know that.
Okay, moving on then. The last thing is the library position? Well, yeah.
So, yeah, the, you see the proceeds librarian position. Or Charlotte, did you have anything else to share beyond your board report? No, I just want to go home. Okay. Sorry. The librarian's position, we're getting some guidance from Colorado State Library Board and also from CDE for school librarians and also public librarians. Going to use that to draft a new job posting and get that posted at the state-level library board and local. And the MOU is here, that's in place till 2034, but you know, MOUs could potentially be adjusted, right? They're not legally binding.
I think this is illegal.
What?
I think it's, Stan, it's illegal.
The MOU?
It's in 2014, this is when we had that big fallout. Les Lindauer was here. And, but the thing is, is that, that a school cannot take and bind another board contractually.
Yeah, there, there, it was a big mess. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but we can certainly discuss creating a new MOU between the school district and the library, or the, or the library district because of all the turmoil that was happening when this one was crafted, but.
Well, I think if you ask the attorney, I mean, if you're talking to him about BOCES, you might throw this in. And by the way, but I, I, I think the document was crafted, and that's illegal in terms of its encumbrances to us as a board. And there's been all these subsequent boards before us.
Yeah, but it, it's, it's an MOU, so, right? It's not, like I said, there's, it's not legally binding. It's more of an understanding and an agreement, but.
Okay, well, just ask. I, yeah.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Drive safely.
Thanks, Charlotte. And then the Meeker music donation.
Yeah, so I'll just talk to that real quickly. I'm helping Rob with the music things. And Meeker Music was kind enough to come up here and spend hours and hours going through all of our instruments. And they didn't charge us for it. And I think it'd be really nice to give them a crack, sort of, for that, as a thank you. And then I just got a donation of a $1,500 keyboard. And so I'll be asking for a lot of that. And then, um, Purple Creek back district has donated their organ.
Oh, that's cool. Okay, so thank you to Meeker.
Yep, for $330, so I figured out how much they charge an hour.
Okay.
I did bring it up at the Victor Elks and they're trying to decide how much they could donate to the music program.
And you know, this could be middle stuff, Stan, it could be like jacks, like cable jacks, drumsticks.
Well, even if it's just enough for just a monetary thing for some seed money or something. And then also, one of the members there, Brian Peterson, went to school here and he said he still had his alto sax and he was going to donate it and bring it over.
And, and you might ask the thrift store because the thrift stores come in.
It's got very much on.
It's, it's coming together while Tuma Eye Club is going to spearhead a fund to, to help. But I was so thrilled when I got the prices of what the repairs would cost because I, in my mind, was going, gee, let's kind of do it.
Thanks for getting, setting that up first, Dawn.
Yeah.
Okay, so then anything further? Adjournment?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn so we can slide down the hill.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
Donna made the motion and Stephanie seconded.
Aye.
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 Aye. My mom said it's not snowing in Victor yet.